Are you recording?
We are recording.
Thank you. It's June 30th, 2025. This is the regular town council meeting. Chapter two of the Acts of 2025 extended through June 30th, 2027, the ability of public bodies to meet in a fully remote or hybrid manner. This law allows us to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the council physically present at the meeting location. This meeting is accessible in real time by Zoom, by phone, and as a live broadcast on Amherst Media, Channel 9, and livestream. There are, in fact, seven counselors in the town room and others will be on Zoom. Please be advised that this meeting is being held in person and that the remote access option is provided as a courtesy only. In the event of technology issues with the remote connection, the meeting will continue in person as scheduled, such that members of the public will are encouraged to attend in the physical location. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling the June 30th regular town council meeting to order at 6:31. I'll call on each counselor by the name they have indicated they would like to be addressed at that time. Please unmute your mic and say present. This will indicate that you can hear us and we can hear you. Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Ana Devlin-Gothier.
Present.
Counselor Ette is absent. Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Counselor Lord is presently not here, supposedly will join us. Pam Rooney.
Here.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane is not here yet. Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub is not here yet. Counselor Walker is not here yet. There is no chat room for this meeting. We will take, and the only change in the order of the agenda is we will take up presentations and discussion item after we complete the action item. There is one general public comment period during this meeting. The announcements include when our next meeting is, which is July 21st, 2025. It also includes the various committee meetings that will be held. And just one other note, and that is that on July 3rd in the evening will be the town's fireworks at McKirk Stadium. We have no hearings tonight, so we're going to move to general public comment. If there's anybody in the room who wants to make general public comment, please make sure you've signed up. If there's anybody on Zoom who would like to make general public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Lynn, point of order, Jennifer has joined us.
Ah, thank you, Jennifer. Can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay. Okay, how many people in the town room? One, and there are two in the audience. We will give you up to three minutes. Public comments on matters within, are on matters within the jurisdiction of the town council. Residents are welcome to express their views for up to three minutes. The council will not engage in a dialogue or comment on a matter raised during general public comment. Public comments are not reflective of the opinions of the town council. We'll recognize speakers in the order in which they have raised their hand. We'll start with Zoom, and that is Mateo Kramer. Please, and, oh, excuse me, we have one. Nope, I think we're right. Mateo, please go ahead. I, and excuse me for mispronouncing your name. Please state your name and where you live.
Hello, this is Matia Kramer. Can you hear me?
Yes, Matia.
I live on East Pleasant Street in District 1. And counselors, I want to thank you for your service. We are in a moment when hard-won gains for civil rights are being rolled back nationally. And it is also the case that state and local governments have always been the laboratory for our democracy, and Amherst can provide a beacon of hope. On today's council agenda is the Amherst Reparations Committee charge, in which you're carrying forward and building on thousands of hours of work by citizens, your predecessors, members of the African Heritage Reparation Assembly, and that's work that has been nationally recognized and reported on in the Associated Press as well as other outlets. And I want to convey my profound gratitude to all of you for carrying this work forward. And may we all look back on this era in our nation's history with the knowledge that Amherst moved forward with reparatory justice. Thank you so much.
Thank you for joining us. In the room, please come forward.
Vincent O'Connor.
Please state your name and where you live.
Point of order, I don't know that your microphone is on. Sorry, we can't hear Vince.
Just press the button and make sure the green light comes on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So Vincent O'Connor, 175 Summer Street, Apartment 12. Here to follow up on a letter that I wrote to the council and point out, I have not received any official information regarding where the stop I referred to in my letter took place. I have received informal phone call from, not from the town government, but elsewhere to the effect that it may have actually happened in Springfield. But I want to point out how dangerous such an activity was and that the stop occurred on May 27th, which was prior to the very sad and tragic events of, in Minneapolis, where a member of the state legislature and her husband were assassinated and another member was, and his wife were seriously wounded. And there is a connection between that and those issues and the rest of my comment, which has to do with the 14th Amendment to the United States Constitution. I have the bi people, the bicentennial commission version of the, of the Constitution. And it reads, "All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they resign, reside." Now, why, how is this connected to the activities of ICE? Because legally, ICE is not empowered to arrest U.S. citizens. And the, the matter in this amendment, the first sentence of this amendment, which was produced by the activity of a U.S. Senator from Massachusetts, Charles Sumner, is this. Subject to, what does mean, subject to the jurisdiction? It means that the laws of the United States apply to the person. Who, who would that not refer to? In the, in the use in which this thing was created, the person who's not subject would be diplomats. Anyone assigned here by a foreign country who's, and our only recourse if they committed violations of the law would be to expel them as persona non grata. So everyone else, including undocumented immigrants, are subject to the jurisdiction of the United States, or else people would come here and commit crimes. And the only recourse the United States and the several states would have would be to expel the individual. And that's absurd. And in fact, that's not what happens because plenty, plenty of people who come here, both legally and illegally, are, are arrested, tried and convicted in the courts of the United States and the several states. So I would just urge people, before you read the commentaries, to read the Constitution. Every member of the council should have a copy. Every member of the public should have a copy. And I think what you will find when you actually read the words is that they are quite clear, unmistakable, and the Supreme Court notwithstanding that they are accessible to every person who can read. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We'll move to Michelle Miller. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, everyone. This is Michelle Miller. I want to begin by thanking the town council and the Governance Organization and Legislation Committee for your continued work on the charge for the successor body to the African Heritage Reparation Assembly. It's been almost two years since the AHRA submitted its final report. And while it's taken time to get to this point, I know that every question, every edit, every round of deliberation has come from a place of deep care and responsibility. I'm very grateful for that. This is not easy work, but Amherst has never chosen the easy path over the right one. In the time since the AHRA submitted its final report, our town has continued to grow in this work. A new cultural center, Ancestral Bridges, has opened its doors, giving us a place to gather, to learn together, and to confront the erasures of Black presence in our shared history. The Black Business Association of Amherst Area has expanded in both size and impact, creating space for economic empowerment and visibility. The town's DEI department, in partnership with Dr. Barbara Love, hosted liberatory visioning sessions to help residents imagine and articulate a future grounded in equity. And just recently, they convened a community session to better understand the needs and experiences of BIPOC residents here in Amherst. All of these efforts, these organizations and initiatives that are moving us forward, are doing so with limited funding, especially now. And yet, they are creating real tangible progress. Can you imagine what they could do with the intentional support and aligned partnership of the Reparations Fund? That's the opportunity before us, to match moral commitment with material backing, guided by shared values and clear purpose. I want to briefly name just a few national data points to remind us why this work is urgent. The median Black household income remains nearly 30,000 less than white households. Black families still hold only 24 to 27 cents for every dollar of white wealth. Black women are more than three times as likely to die from pregnancy-related causes. One in three Black renter households lives below the poverty line. And even with equal education, Black workers still earn just 80 cents on the dollar. This is why reparations matter, not as a symbolic gesture, but as a necessary and grounded response to real measurable harm. Amherst has already shown what it means to align our values with our budget. The formation of this successor body is the next step, not a conclusion, but a continuation of the promise we made to our community. Let's move forward with clarity, courage, and care, and show what's possible when justice becomes not just a value, but a practice. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. There are no other public comments. We are going to move on to the consent agenda. The items were selected, they were considered to be routine. If you want to remove an item, please raise your hand, and I will call on you after I read the motion. To move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. 6A, adoption of the 2025 Disability Pride Month proclamation as amended. 9A, approval of the following town manager appointments. Energy and Climate Action Committee, Emily Dorr for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. Tetsuyu Tanaki for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Public Arts Commission, Theodore Rosenberg and Matthew Watkins for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. Lori Friedman, a reappointment, for a term to expire June 30th, 2026. Recreation Commission appointments, Jonas Cox and Andrew McDougal for terms to expire June 30th, 2028. 11A to see approval of the following meeting minutes, April 14, 2025, special meeting minutes, April 28, 2025, regular meeting minutes. May 5, 2025, regular meeting minutes. See no hands, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We'll move immediately to a vote. Ana Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane is, I'm sorry. Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
It's unanimous. We're going to move then to resolutions. Pat, please introduce and read the paragraph from the 2025 Disability Pride Month proclamation.
I'm very excited that we're, we have this proclamation and the, and the stance that the month of July will be celebrating disability pride. Disability Pride Month was originated in the United States to commemorate the passing of the landmark Americans with Disabilities Act in July 1990. Disability Pride Month celebrates people with disabilities, their identities, their culture, and their contributions to society. It also seeks to change the way people think about and define disability, to end the stigma of disability, and to promote the belief that disability is a natural part of human diversity, in which people with living, living with disabilities can celebrate and take pride. We will have a flag raising on the 16th, but also there is a tri-town, East Hampton, North Hampton, and Amherst celebration of disability pride. In July 5th, there will be a movie called Patrice shown at the Marigold Theater in East Hampton for free. On July 16th, here in Amherst, The Ride Ahead will be shown at the Bang Center. And in July 29th, in North Hampton, at their senior center, Tallywhacker will be shown. This is all part of a tri-town celebration. And I'm going to read the final paragraph of our proclamation. Now, therefore, we, the Amherst Town Council, do hereby proclaim July 2025 as Disability Pride Month, and will raise the disability pride flag at a ceremony outside of the Amherst Town Hall on July 16th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m. For the, and it will fly for the remainder of July, to encourage all residents to celebrate the countless talents, experiences, and contributions of individuals with disabilities, and reaffirm our commitment to take meaningful action to build a city that is inclusive to all. Thank you.
Thank you. We are taking up item seven after we finish the action items, and so we're going to move on to the action items. The first is the Amherst Black Reparations Committee charge and also special municipal employee status. I'm going to read the motion, seek a second, and then call on Ana Devlin-Gothier, who is Chair of GOL, to talk about the committee's recommendation to adopt the Amherst Black Reparations Committee ABRC charge as presented. Is there a second?
Okay.
Thank you. Ana, please go ahead.
So I first want to thank a couple folks who, who put a lot of time and effort into this, this process. As you know, this is the, several times around to GOL. I would like to first thank the folks, counselors, who sent specific comments for GOL to discuss. And I'm going to do my best to explain how we worked through those. But I wanted to appreciate all of you for helping us out by submitting them in proposal form. That was really helpful for GOL as we were going through because we were able to discuss not conceptual ideas, but actual proposals. So thank you for that. I also want to thank the members of GOL who very thoughtfully approached this topic over the course of several meetings. And, and we really worked through each, I mean, we went line by line, right? Like, we discussed this in totality, but also each individual part of it. And I want to thank Dr. Shabazz and Michelle Miller, who attended most of those meetings alongside us, answered questions and gave really important perspective as we went along. So what you are seeing, I want to, I want to be very clear, is the result of GOL discussing pieces, every piece of input that we received and coming to the conclusion that we came to. The committee that is before you will have a lot of work to do. They will begin by, they're beginning by continuing, right? They are beginning by continuing the work of the AHRA in creating a process and a system for distribution of funds. And then after that, they will continue on into the allocation of those funds. So the charge is arranged in, in that order, right? We begin with the priority areas, talking through the scope, determine, identifying the scope of reparations and by reviewing the report from the original AHRA report and, excuse me, and making recommendations to the town council on where to begin. One thing that was really important was that we made sure that the council was, as the ultimate kind of approver of distribution of funds, whether it be CPA, whether it be ABRC, we wanted to make sure that the council agreed with the direction that the group was going. So those proposals, those recommendations for priority areas would come to the town council, and they would come to the town council with a consideration for feasibility, connection to harms being repaired, as well as working in consultation with the town attorney to determine legality for each of those priority areas. Those areas would also take into account the final report funding priorities. So that includes youth programming, affordable housing, business grants, and entrepreneurial training. So after that point, we would, that, that group would begin to look into how to, how to best distribute funds. So they would review and consider what CPA does, what the Community Preservation Act Committee does, as well as the Community Development Block Grant. We're not saying they need to follow exactly either of those processes, but we'd like them to make sure that they've seen how other processes work within the community. They would review the funding plans recommended in that AHRA final report and ultimately create a set, create and adopt a clear set of guidelines regarding eligibility for receiving report, support, yes, support from the Reparations Stabilization Fund, considering those priority areas. It also determined the funding schedule for allocations and established a process for how they're going to receive proposals, evaluate those proposals, and determine an annual budget, as well as make recommendations. Some, some of the pieces of input we got were, should this be a biannual distribution versus an annual distribution? Ultimately, the group felt that for simplicity and mimicking other processes, that this should be an annual budget process. It's, this group may decide to have multi-year funding plans like CPA does, but at this point, we wanted to not set off in every other year cycle, especially with three-year, three-year terms. We wanted to make sure that folks had time to learn it and, and apply it right away. And then we also beefed up the reporting, reporting requirements here. So we wanted to make sure that this group came back to the council once they had finished those first pieces, right? Not just once things are flowing. So we, we said that within one year of their initial convening, the ABRC will provide a written report, including proposed recommendations for those priority areas, as well as the priority level. Sorry, my head's on, just yelled at me, saying it's dying.
Say, there we go. The priority level and the feasibility. A proposed process for distribution of funds, as outlined in that charge above, their outreach efforts, and any recommend, recommended revisions, because we know that this charge was intended to kind of kick them off and keep them going, but they may want to revise the charge at some point. And then every year, we said that they would provide a written report, much like CPA does, including the recommendations for funding and the status of the fund itself. I'd like to pause here to open this up to other members of GOL to see if you have anything to add. I know Pat and Lynn are here. We are missing, it looks like, Counselor Ette and Hala. But Pat or Lynn, do you have anything to add that I did not cover?
Not right now.
I just want to recognize that both Michelle Miller is on Zoom and Dr. Amakar Shabazz has joined us in the town room.
Great, thanks. I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have, and I will also look to my, my colleagues on GOL to help me to respond to those as they come in.
Okay. Are there questions from the council?
What question?
Counselor Hanke.
Yes, thank you. I have two questions. The first one with this, which is for the reporting requirements, the recommendations for revisions to the charge just seems to be in the first year, initial reporting. Is there a reason why GOL didn't also put it every year? Because I can imagine as things get moving, there might be recommendations for revisions to the charge. Is it something we should add to the every year reporting too? So that's question number one. And question number two is with regard to the fourth bullet point under funding that reads, "Determine funding schedule for allocations." I just want clarification on that because when I first initially read that, I interpreted it as the funding schedule for funding the Reparations Stabilization Fund, not for payouts from the fund. So can you please, please clarify what that means? Because I didn't think this committee was dealing with the money that goes into the stabilization fund.
Ana?
Yeah, thank you. I am taking notes, but if I could try to respond to each person, otherwise I'll lose track. So, Mandy, I think that's a great idea. One of the things that GOL talked about was how we need more of our committees to be reviewing their charges and making recommendations to change them more often. So I think it was initially put in solely because of the multi-year when we were modeling after, uh, community CPA. But there's no reason why we shouldn't add that in every year as well. And I would, I would support that personally. So I would, I'd support that as a, I don't know if it's acceptable as like an amendment to the, to the document, if we're allowed to do that now.
Let me just.
In the sec, oh, sorry, go ahead, Lynn.
Yeah. As an, as I comment to that, in order for them to come to the council for approval of distribution of funds, they have to give us some kind of report anyway. So I, and I think we could add that with, it's just the, it's the request for funding every year. Thank you. Go ahead.
And then the second question, Lynn, I'm not sure I followed your answer.
I thought Ana was talking about the recommendation revisions to the ABRC charge going into the second set of bullet points and reports. And your comment just didn't seem to go with that. So I'm confused.
Okay.
The, the second point, you said with regard to determining the funding schedule. Yes, you are correct that that is the funding schedule of the payouts, of the, of the support offered from the fund. And if there's language that you've, you can think of that would clarify that further. But what we meant by that was, you know, there's discussion as to whether payouts could be, like CPA does, multi-year or not. It really depends on the status of the fund, but that, the, the funding schedule piece of this, GOL talked a lot about whether it would be every other year, every year, multi-year. And so that was hoping to clarify, once the group gets their feet under them a little bit, to think about, would it make the most sense? We think annual would make the most sense, but we also want them to be the ultimate deciders of that. So that was the intention of that, and I would be happy for language to clarify if you can think of it. And I can also put some, put some brain cells on it right now, too.
Counselor Hanke, did you have suggested language that you'd like to add that we amend?
Not for that funding bullet. I just needed clarification because the initial reading just struck me as strange. But a second reading then was like, maybe I read it wrong the first time. So I thought I'd ask that one. I have obviously easy language for a motion to amend if a motion to amend is required for the report section versus a friendly amendment.
I think a friendly amendment would be appropriate here, but I, I turned to Athena to tell me if I'm right or wrong there.
And I think that's fine.
It, it would be that fourth bullet point under the first set, any recommended revisions to the ABRC charge being copied, not deleted, but copied and put also down as a third bullet point below.
I see. Okay.
That makes sense.
Got it. Pam.
Thank you. My question has to do with the length of terms. I know there was some discussion previously about wanting shorter terms. I'm comfortable with three years. The, the actual question I have is, there doesn't seem to be any tool to allow for turnover. So in this case, it looks like everyone goes for three years, and then the entire committee has to get reelected, reappointed. I'm, I'm seeing heads shake. If it's a three-year appointment, it's, it's a little bit like council. Everyone in three years gets rea- If it's a three-year appointment, it's it's a little bit like council. Everyone in three years gets rea-
The charter requires that terms over one year be staggered. So it would be.
But I don't see it staggered here.
Well, the charter requires the staggering of it. You don't have to stay it, say it here. It just automatically does it.
Okay, okay. And who sets that? Would that be this committee? Okay, or would it be the?
The first set of appointments would be two or a certain number for one year, a certain number for two years, a certain number for three.
As a town manager, whoever, yeah, thank you.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, thank you for asking that question. That was helpful.
Are there any other questions or? I'm sorry, Anna, go ahead.
I wanted to just speak to Pam's point because it was a, it was a change GOL made that I hadn't spoken to, and so I appreciate uh Pam raising that. The length was decided, this was one of the things that we spent the longest discussing, um, because, you know, all the reasons you said, ultimately, we decided that the consistency between committees was really important, and we felt that three years being consistent with um CPA, as well as given the nature of the work, making sure folks have time to learn it and apply it uh was was important. So that was the decider getting us to the three-year point. And I I think to Mandy's point, yes, the first appointments will be a couple for one, couple for two, a couple for three. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from the council? Before we move to a vote, I want to check and make sure that Counselor Walker can hear us.
Um, hello. Yes, I can. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you. Uh, so we are going to move to a vote. The uh, we begin with Lynn Greismerz and I, Counselor Hanke.
I.
Bob Hegner.
I.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Uh, George, Counselor Ryan.
I.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
I.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
I.
It's unanimous. Thank you so much for all the work that's been done on this. We also have one other vote we need to take with regard to this and to designate special municipal employee status SME for the Amherst Black Reparations Committee. Is there a second?
Second.
DeAngelis.
Um, we'll move, since I assume there's no questions. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Counselor Hanke.
I.
Bob Hegner.
I.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
George Ryan.
I.
Uh, Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
I.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
I.
And Lynn Greismer is an I. Uh, I need to go back and check one thing. Pat, when we were doing the consensus, the consent agenda, did I ever call on you? I did. Okay. I didn't have it checked off. Thank you. Um, so the next item is to authorize the Town Council President to sign the letter to the Amherst School Committee as presented in the June 16th, 2025 Finance Committee Report. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, are there questions and comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Bob Hegner.
I.
Pam Rooney.
No.
Counselor Ryan.
I.
Uh, Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
I.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
No.
Counselor Ette. Oh, I'm sorry. Lynn Greismer is an I. Counselor Hanke.
I.
Motion passes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight in favor, two opposed. The summer town meeting schedule, to amend the 2025 Town Council meeting schedule by removing the regular meeting on August 4, 2025. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Are there questions or comments? Counselor Hanke.
I always have questions about canceling meetings while in advance of the meetings. Um, why, my big one is, why can't we wait until July 2025 to decide whether to cancel the August 4th one? Because we don't know what might come up in the next three weeks that might necessitate a meeting on August 4th. So I I don't understand why it's on this one versus the next meeting.
Um, only for purposes of planning. Uh, did you want to speak to that, Athena?
This was the same timing that we had last year. The council vote was in June for the, or the uh, it was the beginning of July or the end of June for the August meeting. So we just did it the same way we had done it last year.
Pam Rooney.
Uh, it occurs to me that if if we do vote on it tonight, um, town staff could actually plan vacations a little differently if they knew in advance.
Yeah. Uh, other questions or comments? Anna?
If something did come up that was really urgent, is there a reason why we couldn't uh schedule a special town meeting?
There is no reason at all. Of course, we can. With proper notice. Except in the case of emergency, and then you don't even need that.
Hopefully, that's not.
Right. Seeing other questions, we're going to move to a boat vote. Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Kathy's, I'm sorry, Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Point of order.
Point of order. You skipped Counselor Ryan.
The esteemed Counselor.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And I checked you off. Counselor Ryan.
I, thank you.
Okay, so we're starting over. Pam Rooney voted. Counselor Ryan voted. Andy Steinberg.
I.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
I.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
I.
Lynn Greismer is an I. Counselor Hanke.
No.
Bob Hegner.
I.
And it's the motion passes nine in favor, one opposed. That concludes the action items. In your folder or in your packet for tonight was the draft memo that was uh developed by myself, Kathy Shane, and members from Amherst, from the other four towns regarding our desire to have a conversation about what we can afford for schools and also what is needed. Are there questions or comments? And I also want to point out that there is an amendment to that memo. It's the last page, and the purpose of the amendment is to um just add additional times when this discussion has come up. Counselor Hanke.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments. Um, it it sounds like this is a draft, so there might be able to be some changes made. I can send you some comments that I have that are not necessarily need to be brought up now because they're more, you know.
Absolutely.
Hypo-type things and wording, but um I'm concerned about having this meeting by Zoom. Um, I would like to see it in person. By Zoom, um does not allow the towns representatives as a group to even converse during the meeting. But it also doesn't really allow the whole group to collaborate in any way because everyone is siloed in their own area. So I would like to see this as an in-person meeting, not a Zoom meeting. The paragraph on page two that talks about roles. Um, I have a request to add something regarding the roles of the funding bodies, which would be us and the town meeting members or, you know, through their, served by their select boards and finance committees, as it's worded here, about our role as a funding body is potentially to make suggestions to other elected bodies on needs for operational changes to stay within fiscal capabilities. That it's not just about, here's the capability, but it's within a protect, potentially our role to say, and here's, we we recommend operational changes to help you meet those capabilities. That doesn't mean they have to follow them, but I think we have a responsibility to and and a role that does that. Um, on, I think it's page three, the what do we have to spend in local taxing capacity, that first one that says prop two and a half limits. I would like to see an addition of and use of excess levy capacity because we know other towns have that. So we should talk about that that should be part of the what do we have to spend, the use of excess levy capacity. And I'll send you all my track changes. Um, and I think that might be my last big comment. Um, the, oh, there was one more under exploring spending on K-12 education, the increasing number one, A5, the overhead is where I put it. Um, but maintaining and operating buildings well below capacity. Um, just being a little more clear about how many that the overhead includes fixtures that might not be operating at full capacity. Or at very low, you know. Um, in other words, buildings that have capacity of thousands of people and don't have thousands of people in them, for example, um, but other ways of other things about operating below capacity. Um, otherwise, I thought it was a very good letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Andy Steinberg.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you, uh, President Greismer, for your leadership in working with the other towns to get a draft together of this document that we're looking at today. And uh, I understand that it was something that involved consultation with elected leadership in other towns and some appointed leadership in other towns, probably finance committees. Which means that it's a joint document and it's awkward for us to be put in the position of making suggestions for change because of that. And that therefore I don't want to do that. There were three things that I thought about uh that I wanted to bring to the attention, not just of you, but the entire council. Um, that I thought about because this process, as we go forward, is not just in my mind about what we're going to be doing in developing a budget for FY '27. I think that this is really talking about some long-range understandings and trying to build a body of knowledge for multi-years. And um, in that regard, I think that there's a couple of things that I would suggest. One is that uh, when you do meet, uh, that you expand, make sure that you cover the full gamut of what it means about demographics. And there are two things, uh, one thing in particular, um, that I want to bring to your attention. And that is uh, that there is information available that's collected by the Census Bureau and available uh Massachusetts specific by town for um what the projections are for the uh population by age going forward. And it's pretty clear when you look at that information that we are continuing in Amherst, and I did not look at the other three towns, but I did look at Amherst pretty closely. We are in a progression of becoming um an aging community. And uh, the number of the population that is going to be 65 and above is going to continue to grow gradually over time. I think that there are consequences to that, uh, one of which is uh, what the burden of property tax falls on. And uh, that we need to be very cognizant of what it is that we're expecting about future growth in property tax when we know that in Amherst, it is paid for by homeowners. Uh, the second is, and this gets into my second point entirely, which is to make sure that we're looking very closely at enrollment projections. And uh, that uh, that not be a lost uh part of the discussion. And the third thing that I wanted to add was that uh, and this is my uh, from my own experience. We have talked over the years, off and on, about whether Amherst and the three other towns would be better off financially with a full K to 12 regional district as opposed to this combined approach that we have now. And um, I was chair of the last effort to um develop a plan which did not go forward because one town, uh, the representative withdrew support. And uh, it, but the investigation we did was pretty thorough with a lot of consultant time going into it. And the conclusion was that both financially and educationally, that there's a lot of sound reasons to move towards uh and develop a uh full K-12 region. And uh, I, it is probably worth bringing that back up to this group. And uh, so I wanted to point that out to the council and to our representatives. Because I think that we would be making a mistake looking at a long-range solution for what is becoming a bigger and bigger dilemma that I don't have to spell out. Because finance committee's already done that. But um, I think that we really should be talking about a full range of solutions. So those are my additional comments.
And Andy, is there a report from that group?
I believe there was a report and of course all of the consultant reports. To, I I think I uh have a pretty complete library of the material. Um, so yes.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing those as well. Are there any other questions or comments? And let me just say, this is a draft. Uh, and I really welcome additional comments. I would like to receive them as soon as possible. Uh, since the group continues to meet. Uh, Counselor Hanke, I I agree with you about it being in person. Um, one option might be that there be a uh option for Zoom for those that might be on vacation. Okay. We're also trying to find a neutral venue since this is really the best room, and yet it's not considered neutral. So we're working, uh, the idea is to work with UMass to see if we could do that. Okay? Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we're going to move on then to uh the appointments. We've already done the town manager's appointments. I'm sorry. Uh, do we want to take a break? It's only 20 after 7:00. I'm sorry. Yes, no, or maybe? Do you want a break? Okay. All right, uh, we are going to proceed. So uh, we are to the planning board appointments, and I'm going to call on Community Resources Committee Chair Pam Rooney.
Thank you. We have two appointments coming to tonight, the first being, sorry for the scratchy voice, um, the first being planning board. As you read in the packet, all of the statements of interest from the candidates are in there. And if you have had a chance to look at that, that would be wonderful. But basically, the CRC is looking for, is making recommendations and looking for your um input on filling three planning board vacancies. There are two impending vacancies due to the ends of of a three-year term, two three-year terms. And there is one vacancy due to a resignation during that person's first year of appointments. So the remaining time on that um, in that term is for two years. So we're looking for two three-year terms and one two-year term to be filled. So we're looking for two three-year terms and one two-year term to be filled. There was, as you can guess, a healthy conversation and discussion about the attributes and capabilities of the, the candidates. And I can summarize, but it was also in the report that we were fairly well settled on the appointment for, of Bruce Coldom for a second three-year term. We were almost as settled on the appointment of Mr. Jarrett Smith for a three-year term. And then we had two split votes that were for either recommending Karen Winter for a renewal of a second three-year term and Angus, Angus McLeod for the start of a brand-new term. So the CRC, as I, as, as in this paper, the CRC voted five to zero, five yes, zero no for Bruce Coldom, four yes, one no for Jarrett Smith, and a split vote of three yes and two no for both Karen Winter, Karen Winter and Angus McLeod. The motions, should we go to that step, are to appoint Bruce, to appoint Bruce Coldom to the planning board for a term beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028. So I don't know, Lynn, how you want to break this out and proceed with the actual vote because you have our recommendation. It's now in the hands of the town council.
I'm, I'm wondering, given the vote and the discussion, whether we should split the motion and go by individual. Okay? George, you had your hand up.
That is not a bad suggestion. I'm prepared to make the motion based on what's in the motion sheet. The motion sheet actually, at least as I read it, offers two names for a three-year term and one name for a two-year term. So I'm prepared to move ahead based on the motion sheet and proposing names for each of the slots.
Who made the motion sheet? I, I don't think I know the motion.
There's no names on the motion sheet.
There's no name.
They're blank.
We can show the motion up on the screen.
Thank you. I didn't craft it.
Lynn, the audience, okay.
I'm sorry?
I was just going to ask if the audience remotely could see, but it's now up.
Yes, that's why I asked that it be up there. Okay, Jennifer?
Yes.
Yes?
It's, yes, we can see it. Thank you.
All right. So you would like to make a motion, George?
Well, I think it might be simpler to do it by splitting the motion. I have no problem with that. I was just making my motion based on what's written down in black and white, but I'd be prepared to endorse your suggestion of just dividing and taking it one at a time.
Please go ahead and make a motion.
So I'm going to move to appoint Bruce Coldom to the planning board for a term beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments? Then we're going to vote on Bruce Coldom's candidacy for a three-year term. We begin the process with Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
And Pam Rooney.
Yes.
It's unanimous. Next motion.
I move to appoint Jarrett Smith to the planning board for a term beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028.
Second.
Okay. And are there any other questions or comments? Then in that case, we'll move, in this case, we'll start with, I'm just going to stay with the same order for all of this. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub. Counselor Walker. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
No.
Wait a minute.
Seven to one.
Okay. Seven to one, it's that.
It's seven to two with one abstention and.
I'm sorry. It is actually one, two, three, four, five, six.
Seven to two with one abstention, got a majority of those present.
Seven to two with one extension. Thank you. All right. Next motion.
Point of order.
Yes.
We're doing it in, in alphabetical order or something. We, I would like to, I would like to make a motion to appoint Karen Winter.
Point of order, you can't make a motion during a point of order.
That's right. I can't. Thank you. Point of order. It, it basically boils down to who is next for the motion. And so I would like to speak to that issue if I could.
Please, go ahead.
Point of order, George Ryan has his hand up.
But I can't do it during a point of order.
I'm sorry.
George Ryan has his hand up and Counselor Rooney does not.
And I can't see George Ryan's hand. Sorry. Counselor Ryan, you have your.
Well, my hand was up because I was prepared to make the third motion.
All right. Please make your motion.
Thank you. I move to appoint Agnes McLeod to the planning board effective immediately for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Second.
Pam Rooney.
I'd like to speak to my.
Oh, please, please speak your motion, and then I'll go to Pam.
As we've heard, the CRC had a split vote on the third candidate. They had clear recommendation for the two candidates that we've just voted to appoint to the planning board, but for the third candidate, they were split three-two. They had no recommendation. That's the first point I would like to make. It really falls to us to decide. It falls to us, no matter what the planning, it was getting what CRC recommends, but we take the recommendation seriously. So that's the first point I'd like to make. The second has to do with the actual interviews, and I found them quite informative. I hope that you had a chance to listen to them. I particularly was struck by the question that involved the housing production plan. Thought that was an excellent question because it asked each of the candidates to look at what the draft housing production plan proposes to actually increase housing in our community at a time in which I think most of us would acknowledge there's a genuine housing crisis. There were nine proposals in that document, and the candidates were asked to select two or three and to discuss them. I thought both McLeod and Jarrett Smith offered very thoughtful and insightful comments. They had clearly read the document, and they picked out very specific items, and they offered very specific comments as to what they thought might be possible ways, not fixed, but possible ways to actually increase housing production. I have to say, I was disappointed, particularly in the response of Winter, who simply said that she agreed or she liked Jarrett, Jarrett's response. It wasn't made clear what it was about Jarrett's response that she liked. Apparently, it was all of it, but it's hard to tell. So instead of any kind of specific response to nine proposals about how to increase housing production, what we got instead was, well, I liked what he said. So that was disappointing. I felt it was an opportunity for the members who've now served three years on the, on, on this board to actually address some very specific ideas and give us some sense of what their thinking was. And in that case, I was disappointed in the response that Winter gave. The third thing I'd like to point out to my colleagues is that currently, four of the six members who reside on the planning board reside in one zoning district, namely the RG. The RG represents less than 4% of the residential land area in the town of Amherst. Perhaps it's just an accident, but at our last meeting, we had what I thought was a very ill-conceived proposal from the planning board involving what zoning district? The RG. And what was the proposal? Contrary to what housing advocates have been saying, contrary to what the state, the governor's been saying, contrary to many what we've been saying, contrary to what our master plan encourages, the, the proposal was to decrease density in the RG. So perhaps that was just a coincidence. I don't think so. But again, I would like my colleagues to consider the fact that four of the six members currently on the board reside in less than 4% of the actual residential land area in the town of Amherst, one of whom includes Ms. Winter. But I think the real reason I would like us to consider Agnes McLeod is that while he does not have the experience that Winter has, I thought that his answers were quite thoughtful and informed. He clearly is serious. But most important, I think he represents a new and younger voice, which this body clearly needs. These, this body is making decisions about the future of our community that the people like Agnes and Jarrett and others will have to live with, and I would really like to see more of those voices on this body. So my fourth reason has really to do with the, the idea of putting new and fresh voices, voices that represent the future, on a body that's going to make decisions that's going profoundly influence the future of our town. So that's my thoughts about why I hope you will support Agnes McLeod for the planning board.
Okay. Pam Rooney.
Thank you. It was quite a, it was, it was a very good discussion. There were some very thoughtful answers in, from everyone. I think the order of, the order of motion makes it very difficult to actually say no to someone and, and move the, the dial to a different person. So I am, I am going to be advocating that Karen Winter be the person that gets the, the two-year term, since we've already, excuse me, the thir, the three-year term because, because, yes, she has served for three years on the planning board, and I respect very much her interest level, her, her very active advocacy within the housing subcommittee discussions. This person is very active, brings a lot to the table, not necessarily a, a specific planning background, but very much a, a person of the world. I don't think we need to go into age discrimination because we don't have to do that. I, I am going to be supporting the reappointment of Karen Winter for a second term. I think she has worked hard and deserves to be reappointed.
So the motion that's on the table is, in fact, for a two-year term for Agnes McLeod. And so that's the motion we need to now vote on.
Correct. The previous two votes were for three-year terms. So this last one is the two-year term.
Right. We've already done.
You've already done two of the three-year terms. So the only remaining vacancy right now is for a term to expire in 2027.
Right. And I would, and I would be advocating for Karen.
Okay.
If she's not being given a three-year renewal, I would like to see her put on for a two-year term.
Thank you. Jennifer Taub.
Yes, I would like to respond to Counselor Ryan. I, well, starting with the response to the housing production plan question. First, the housing production plan hasn't even come before the council for discussion, yet alone adoption. Agnes McLeoid, who, you know, I, seems like a, you know, a very well-meaning, thoughtful person who's lived in Amherst for less than a year, and I, his response to what he thought, he said that he would like to see the housing production plan begin to implement what's easiest to implement, and that would be the plan recommends that we build more student housing, which hasn't been a problem in Amherst, and we will definitely do that. I don't know that we need a recommendation to make sure that that's done, but that is the most easy to implement. So that didn't strike me frankly as the most thoughtful answer for where, you know, Amherst needs to be focusing its housing production. In terms of Karen Winter has, well, I'll just respond to what George said, because Karen would be, I guess, for the next motion, but she has been a steadfast member of the planning board. She was an early and strong supporter for the university district, University Drive Overlay District. She for developing East Amherst, for a strong vital downtown. She is very supportive of development in Amherst. She was appointed, she's the planning board's appointee to the design review board. District Four in Amherst, where only three of the members, not four, three, three of the members of the planning board do live in District Four, but District Four extends from university, from Amity Place at University Drive and Amity Street all the way to Northeast Street and, and Strong. I would also point out that if Mr. McLeoid is appointed to the board, he and Jarrett Smith both live in Amherst Woods, which is, you know, one subdivision in the town of Amherst. I don't know that we need two representatives on the planning board from what's probably the most exclusively zoned subdivision in town. It's zoned for single-family houses on large lots. It is a Aquifer recharge overlay protection district, so really, none of the development in town happens in that area. It's just I, I, we have one representative there now in Jarrett Smith. I don't know that we need two representatives on the planning board. I mean, if we're looking at geographical distribution from that one subdivision. And I would also, if Karen is not on the board, the planning board is one woman and six white men. That's our planning board. So I feel like Karen, Karen Winters is kind of being railroaded off the board because there's members of the council that don't agree with her vote on a single issue, which was returning footnote M to its original dimensional size, since now in the district, Karen lives in the district that is zoned for the greatest density in town. It's a district that's zoned for all different kinds of housings, not exclusively single housing, like the subdivision in which two members you would like to have on the board. It's zoned for the smallest lots in town, the greatest density, and it's the most walkable. So it lives out the goals of the master plan. And I don't know why we would not extend the courtesy of a second term, and now we're only talking about a second two-year term, as has been our tradition on other boards and committees. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat DeAngelis.
Thank you. I am supportive of Mr. McLeod's appointment to the planning board, and I do that because of several, well, for several reasons, but I'm going to read the reasons basically from his statement of interest. In the report that came out from CRC, it says he's had no specific planning board experience and doesn't, he has, let me see, he has stated he has no previous board experience. Oh, I'm the wrong person. There we go. No wonder it didn't make sense. I'm so sorry. The report says he has no previous board experiences, but has worked in school financing, and he does not necessarily have qualifications specific to planning. Now, I'm going to go into his quote from his statement of interest. "I study the history of school finance, which necessarily implicates questions of state policy, local governance, zoning decisions, real estate development, and planning." And he goes on. He says that he has, he's very familiar with the language of civil planning, and he believes he could contribute other forms of knowledge that would enhance discussions around planning. He also said, very specifically, "He has experience serving on committees, task, tasks with receiving and processing input, drafting planning documents, and sharing out ideas with the broader community." Now, Ms. Winter has no specific planning background when she came onto the committee, and she's done some good work. Some. and she's done some good work, some I agree with and some I don't. But what I feel like we have here is a person who's really coming from a different place, from really understanding the history of zoning, and he has direct experience drafting planning documents. So to me, it is a wiser choice to take on Mr. McLeod.
Counselor Hanke, you have your hand up again.
Yeah, thank you. I'd like to clear up some, some statements that were made by fellow counselors. Mr. McLeod, in his interview, talked about the Housing Production Plan of doing the lightest lifts for the highest yield. That's what he said. And then he specifically mentioned the strategies two, three, and eight. I'm going to read to you what they are, because fellow counselors seem to misapply, misimply what those are. Strategy number two, upzone residential districts for high-density residential use and redefine apartment uses. Strategy three, facilitate infill development and adaptive reuse where appropriate. And strategy eight, apply density bonus provisions to more development types. They don't specifically speak to student housing, although that was implied. I find it highly interesting that someone says that two reps from one neighborhood is unacceptable for South Amherst, but is completely acceptable for the downtown RG. I don't quite understand the opposition for one neighborhood, but the acceptance, in fact, it's more than two for another neighborhood, but the acceptance of two or more in another Ms. Winter, in her responses, talked about needing to focus on development that will address the needs of year-round residents and families in particular, families of an age that Mr. McLeod is. We struggle to attract families that have kids in schools, families like my family, family like Jara Smith's family, families like Angus McLeod's families. Why don't we put the people who are struggling to attract on the board that plans for attracting those families?
I'm going to go back to George Ryan. Counselor Ryan.
Again, my point about residency has to do with the zoning district. The RG represents less than 4% of the residential land area in our town, and yet four members currently of this body, including Ms. Winter, reside in the RG. I don't really care about neighborhoods. What I care about are zoning districts and that there be some sense of representation across the board. And so that is the response to that. It's not about what neighborhood you live in, it's what zoning district you represent. And the RG is one that is wildly overrepresented currently. But I think again, my, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Bring your mic closer.
And so, but again, back to my point, sort of, as Andy has just said, that we have an opportunity to place on the board the future, and I would like us to consider that as perhaps the most important point. Decisions made by this body are going to profoundly influence the people who are coming here now, and I would like to see more people on that board who have, shall we say, real skin in the game.
Jennifer Taub.
Okay. I would like to see more people on the board that have real skin in the game, too. The RG districts may represent a smaller percentage of landmass, but they have a lot of people living there because they are very densely populated. There is, you go down Cosby Street, which is the street that I'm on, I'm on, that's where my driveway is, the houses are cheap to jowl. So it may be smaller landmass, but I'd say you have more people living there than the parts of town, again, which have large houses or even small houses on large lots. So the landmass doesn't speak to the density of the residents living there. I would, I mean, Karen Winter's daughter and son-in-law moved around the corner from her. They have a young child that they're raising in, in Amherst. I, I don't think we have frankly difficulty attracting families to Amherst that can afford to live in Amherst Woods. So I don't know that that's really the future of Amherst, our two people who were in the last year able to move into the Amherst Woods development. So I, I think that if you're supporting density, as Mr. McLeoid said he did, he wants density, he wants more apartments, all that is happening in the area where Karen Winters lives. It is not and will not happen in the Recharge Overlay Protection District, where we may have two planning board members, where we may have two members of the board residing. And I would also say for the RG district, you know, again, it's, it's dense, so a lot of residents live there, even if it's only 4% of the landmass. And as the chair of the planning board, Doug Marshall, has said, although he lives in the RG, as does Karen Winter, he has said during meetings that he feels that they live in very different areas. Thank you.
Anna.
This is unrelated to the discussion at hand, which has been very interesting, and I appreciate being able to read all of the opinions and watch the interviews back from the CRC meetings and all that has happened. My quick disclosure is that one of the applicants also works at, under the same employer I work for. I do not know them. I have never met them, and my vote will not be influenced at all by the fact that we share an employer. I just needed to name that prior to the vote.
Thank you for your disclosure. Are there any other questions or comments?
Can you clarify, Andy?
Oh, yes, Andy.
Sorry, I thought I had my hand up, but I guess it didn't. I just had a simple question for the chair. There were four, the write-up about Angus McLeod was essentially four sentences, and I found a little bit of difficulty putting two together, because he said he's, one was, he stated he has no previous board experience, and then the last sentence says he has served on numerous boards and committees in other communities. That struck me as needing a little explanation.
Thank you. I think I meant to say he actually said, "I don't have any planning board experience." So when we asked, you know, "Have you attended ZBA meetings? Have you, have you listened into planning board meetings?" And he basically acknowledged that he did not have planning board experience. But yes, he's had plenty of board and, you know, board member experience in other arenas.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification. Are there any other questions or comments? Then we're going to move to the vote. The motion at this point is to point Angus McLeod to a two-year term that would begin immediately and expire on June 30th, 2027. Okay? We'll begin with George Ryan. Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub. Counselor Walker. Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Counselor, I'm Pam Rooney.
No.
It is, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, in favor, two opposed, and one abstention. And I believe that fills the seats for the planning board. It fills the seats available for the planning board.
Okay. Lynn, may I ask a question of the town manager?
Yes.
Given that the council just appointed Mr. Jara Smith to the planning board and the, he has made an affirmative statement that he does not wish to be appointed to two different boards, can you tell us whether you will be formally withdrawing his, your nomination and appointment of him to the AMAHT before July 3rd?
Yeah, so Mr. Smith has expressed a preference to serve on the planning board and didn't want to serve on two boards. So with that, with the council's vote tonight, I'll withdraw his appointment to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Then we are moving on to ZBA. The motion is to appoint David Alfeld and David Slaveter to the zoning-
Excuse me, can I give my report?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We had a very good conversation. We have, we had four strong candidates for serving on the zoning board of appeals. And we are filling two full-member vacancies for three-year terms and up to four associate member vacancies, which, which recycle essentially every year for one-year appointments. The recommendation that came out of the CRC is to recommend that the town council appoint David Slaveter and David Alfeld for the two full-member three-year terms beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028. And we also recommended to, that the council appoint Hilda Greenbaum and Stephen Casey for associate member terms. They are one-year terms beginning on July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. And the vote for that package was a five, five yes and zero no. So it was unanimous for this package. I would like to have it treated as such and voted on as a package.
Okay. So the motion, as I have it on the motion sheet, is to appoint David Alfeld and David Slaveter to the zoning board of appeals for terms beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2028, and Stephen Casey and Hilda Greenbaum as associate members of the zoning board of appeals for terms beginning July 1, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any question or comment? Anna.
I just had a question. It's not impacting my vote here, but I didn't have a chance to watch the, I focused my energy on the planning board discussions because of the recommendation coming out of CRC. So I'm curious how CRC handles incidents where you have applicants for ZBA or planning board who have a potential conflict of interest due to their own business being tied in with property management or, or similar. I'm curious if that has come up at CRC, and if so, how you handle that.
We do have people, can you hear me? We do have people that serve on the planning board who are property managers or owners of a property that is rented. I don't know that we have that same situation on the, the table or the, the panel of people being recommended for, oh, yes, we do, one.
Yeah.
Yes, who is also a landlord and, and has properties managed. The boards, if, if there is, if there is something that deals with a property that that person owns, then they need to recuse themselves. And I don't believe that we've ever had a situation where, where we have run into a problem where somebody was, was representing, I shouldn't say this, I can't say that, forget It's not been, it's not been a problem, and I think people are very careful when they take positions. They're, they're interpreting the, the law, they're interpreting the regulations, and they need to be held to that interpretation.
Anna, did you have a further question on that?
I just wanted to clarify what I, I appreciate that, Pam, and I think it's because, you know, at some point, any decision by a planning board or zoning board that is impacting rental housing made by someone who has a financial stake in the rental housing market could be considered a conflict of interest. And I, I'm just curious how we've navigated that. I know we have a lot of folks in this town who are in that industry, and so I, I was more curious if CRC has had that discussion, because I, I would argue that there is a considerable financial impact on folks in that industry on, given any building decisions we make that are rental housing-related.
Counselor Hanke.
You bring up a great point. And in my time on CRC, that conversation has not happened in terms of either adding into questions, potential conflicts, and how they would deal with it. Obviously, they have to comply with the ethics law. ZBA and planning, when dealing on the quasi-judicial side, I believe have extra requirements, too, including if you're, receive the abutter's notice, you cannot sit on the hearing. So if you're in a butter, at least. There are exceptions where the council can actually vote to allow them to, because early in our first term, we did do that for some of the ZBA. I think it was the ZBA when the Amherst College was, was permitting their track and field or something, one of the fields, because enough of them, quote, "abutted" that property, that they wouldn't have even had a quorum to hold the hearing. So, so there's, there's, there's ways you can, you can overcome some of those issues. But it's a great question. We have not had that conversation. I would recommend the next time that CRC seeks questions to ask candidates, that, that a question regarding how conflicts would be handled if you are a property manager or in the field, be, suggest adding it to the list of interview questions.
Part of me wonders if it's not even an interview question as much as it's an ethics commission question. I think that, for me, it's more that kind of thing, about where does it become an actual conflict of interest versus kind of just, this is the, the ecosystem we exist in. But, sorry, that's-
Pam, I see your hand, but I'm going to go to Jennifer.
Yeah, I would say the same. You know, I know it's come up, and some people were shocked that it came up, but I mean, we have a chair of the planning board, who's a senior planner at UMass, who has said on many occasions that before we can really tackle the town's housing shortage or challenges, we need to address the student housing problem. And one could say, "Is that a conflict of interest?" Because that's in his, no, that's in his employer's, where he, that's in his employer's interest. So there's, there's many places, I think, if you're going to, where there's conflicts of interest, that we, we haven't addressed it maybe, perhaps should.
Are there any other questions or comments, since actually what we're voting on is not this issue? Okay? Although I appreciate the suggestions, and as I am sure the members of CRC do as well. So the motion's on the floor. Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Thank you. We are now going to move into committee and liaison reports. There's nothing from BCG, CRC, Pam or Jennifer? Nothing? We pretty much covered what you've been doing. Okay. Elementary school building, Kathy is not here, Alicia or Paul, anything?
The committee met last week and approved some bills. The project keeps moving forward on, on track. There has been some discussion about what the federal budget, the big-
Beautiful.
-palliative bill will do to potential funding for some of the sustainability initiatives, which we are very concerned about. We will not be able to know what that looks like until we're eligible to apply, which will be in 20, middle of 2026.
And am I correct that that was the $5 million we voted for with the hope of reimbursement?
I think there was a, there was the hope for having the IRA replace some of that money to support that, so the taxpayers wouldn't have to pay for it. Yes.
Okay. Can I ask one other question? I assume that the reason when you go by the building at night, it's all lit up, is for safety reasons.
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments on that, besides the fact that it's exciting? Finance committee, Bob Hegner.
Yeah, we didn't-
Yeah, we didn't real, we haven't met, I think, since our last council meeting, but we are meeting tomorrow, and we're going to review the third quarter report, which I suggest, it's in the packet. I suggest everyone take a look at it, because, you know, we have some weird things going on because of how we use DARPA money, and we still have a very large amount of money coming in from investment income. So it's, we're gonna begin a discussion tomorrow of what to do with free cash at the end, when it's certified. So, but we're not gonna take any vote on it.
Thank you. GOL, Anna.
We are working on the town manager evaluation process right now. We've got a couple bylaws and such expected to come our way at some point soon. A few are with KP Law, some are still in their other committees, but we are currently working on the evaluation process and revamping that from, from, from scratch. And similarly, if folks, just a reminder, if you have questions, or sorry, not questions, questions too, but if you have suggestions specifically for changes to the rules or procedure, please send those to me in track changes form. And then we finally voted the pool for finance committee sufficient last, at our last meeting, which is very exciting. So we will be moving forward with soliciting statements of interest and conducting interviews for that. We will, I'll let the council know once we have that confirmed, but we are working on those as we, as we speak. And thank you to Pat for helping take the lead on the coordination for the finance committee work. Appreciate it.
Pat, did you have any comment? Please use your mic.
Yes, I'm sorry. We have lost one candidate because of the time commitment, and that person has joined the housing trust. So they have resigned. So we're down to two applicants for one position.
For two positions.
For two positions.
Well, we got another one though, recently.
We just done another one today.
Oh, okay, I haven't seen-
We're at three, folks. We're gonna be great.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep our fingers crossed. Thank you. Jones Library Building Committee, Pam Rooney. Okay. Paul, anything?
For town manager.
For Jones Library.
Just like, no.
Okay. TSO, Andy.
Yeah, again, I submitted a written report, and so principally, that is the report. I do want to remind you that the next meeting is July 17. The agenda gives, the next meeting is this week, July 3, but we had decided that that was unnecessary, since we just met last week, to do two meetings in a row. And I think unless there are questions about what was submitted in writing, I have nothing further.
Thank you, and thank you for the written report. I do understand that if there is a recommendation regarding Heatherstone, it would not come until later, until after your meeting on the 17th, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I'm asking that as a District Two counselor. Any liaison reports? Okay, seeing none, we've approved minutes. Paul, you have no written report? Any comments you'd like to make?
I do. I have a few things I wanted to mention. First, today, we saw the construction begin on the new track and field. We had done the ceremonial groundbreaking a couple weeks ago, so it was really good to see them starting to rip up the old track and get started on it. Likewise, where the Jones Library is in the process of relocating to 101 University Drive, there, you know, we're hoping, once they're out, that the contractor will be able to move in and begin construction on that. The heat wave last week was, we had, our team really responded well, but one thing I want to point out is that one of, one of our strategies, when there is a designated heat wave, is to open up our pools for access to anybody for free. And it's, so our team had worked very hard to get the War Memorial Pool ready to be opened, so they, as they, over the course of the last few months, were installing new safe pool drains, a new liner. We're doing some plumbing update on the facility, and so that was being able to pass inspection, which it did. And then for that Sunday to Wednesday, a thousand, over a thousand people attended the War Memorial Pool, and over 1,300 people attended the Mill River Pool during that, that heat wave, that Sunday to Wednesday. So that's way above normal, and it was just important, I think, for people to be able to have someplace to go to cool off. So just, a lot of work went into that, especially from our recreation department, so just credit them for that. The, want to really mention about, we have this summer meals program that's starting, started today, and so there are, there's free food available to anybody 18 and under at Olympia Oaks, University Village, Mill River, Village Park, Meadowview, which is 266 East Hadley Road, Butternut Farm, Colonial Village, and Rolling Green. And so these are meals, there'll be, there'll be a food truck that's at all these locations every day between 12 and 3:35. They have a schedule that's, that's published and is on our website as well. So anybody, any child 18 or under can go and get free food every Monday through Friday during the summer. So that's a really important thing for, I want to make sure all of our residents know that that's available, so that no, no young person would go without food, for at least lunch this summer. And lastly, just want to mention that we've been full steam ahead on getting our, the fireworks at Thursday, which is Thursday night, July 3. It looks like we will have good weather. Usually, there's tens of thousands of people who go to McGurk Stadium, adjacent to, the field adjacent to McGurk Stadium, stadium. And again, a lot of cooperation between, especially led by Becky Demling at the Recreation Department. But University of Massachusetts has been a tremendous partner, providing lots of support, including police and facilities and organization and things like that. Also, our, our fire department is very, very present there, as well as the Hadley Fire Department, that inspects the fireworks, which we are grateful, the town of Hadley does that for us. And to our DPW, which is helping to support the food trucks, because we're moving them to a different location this year. I think that'll be better for all the people who are visiting. So it's a lot happening this week, just, and so it just, especially for our Recreation Department, they've been really busy. So those are things I want to update you on.
Bob Hegner, you have a question?
Yeah, Paul, I just got my new tax bill for property taxes. Does it include the, the assessment for the new elementary school?
Yes.
Yeah, it has a portion of it, not everything, yes.
In a previous meeting, maybe a year ago or so, I suggested that we try to report that separately, that amount separately. I'm wondering if that's possible.
It isn't possible, but we can do education for people, which I think that reminds me, we should be doing more of that, so we can do that.
Okay, yeah, I did notice the increase. George Ryan, I mean, sorry, Counselor Ryan.
So, Paul, exciting news about the food program that's through UMass, I believe. The funding, though, I probably should know this, but I don't. Project Bread was mentioned. Is the funding state funding? Is it, where's, do we know where the money's-
I don't know where the funding comes from, George.
So I need to come on my, okay, thank you.
Pam Rooney.
Thank you. Question for Paul, has to, it goes back to what Vince O'Connor talked about this, this evening, and the subject has been brought up a couple times. If we, if we have ICE stops and kidnappings, is there, can we ask the APD to intervene in any shape or form? And I guess, if not for public knowledge, why not?
So the police department or any town official can't obstruct a legal law enforcement activity. So this is, you know, defined as being legal. We may think, we may disagree with it, but that's how it's being defined. The way we process this information is when we have verified information of ICE activity, if the police know about it or anybody knows about it, they contact our office. Our, our office connects with the Public Health Director, Kiko Malin, who is well-connected into all the different sources of support that people may have. She also has access to all the other groups that are involved with this, and uses her discretion in what to, who to notify when. She's also well-connected to our school district and people who work with children in our school district. So in terms of, and the other thing that we do is our communications director. If we have something that's verified, we immediately put out information on our website and share it with the media, because that's what we've done the last two times, where we've become aware of it. So those are, and if, I don't think that is necessarily our responsibility to notify a, a private, a private group in terms of what's going on, but we try to share it out broadly, so anybody who would like to take advantage of that information can share it out.
Pat?
Thank you. Paul, is that, can I get copies of that flyer?
Sure.
Take to the Survival Center if they have it. I'll be there on Friday.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good idea. In fact, can, could you send it to us so that we can put it out through our newsletters? Okay. Jennifer?
Yes, picking up on Pam's question, because I've been asked this by several residents. So I understand that Amherst Police Department can't intervene, like literally get between an ICE agent and, and someone, member of the public. But can they, if the ICE agents are not identified as such, can the Amherst Police, if they are on-site, request identification? I mean, if it looks like somebody's just apprehending somebody and you don't know who that person is, wouldn't you intervene?
I'd have to talk to the police chief about that. I think that their understanding is that once someone identifies themselves as a federal agent, oftentimes, they do have outfits on that say that, but I guess anybody could. And I think they, trying to think, I think they do identify themselves as being either ATF or ICE agents or something like that, but they don't identify their names. Can they, the question is, can the police sort of intervene? I think there's a really, we've talked about this with our town attorney, there's a very serious charge of obstruction of justice, that, or interference with, with police doing their activities. So I think there, we have a very, we're very cautious about that. Residents are eligible to do what they want, but again, those are very, people need to understand what, what steps they're taking when they, when they are taking those steps. I think, I have my own opinion on how, I think those are effective things, but in terms of what I can recommend that the town officials do as bodies, elements of our town government, it's a different, different thing.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the town manager? Okay. Going on to counselor comments, you have a written report. I'm sorry, Pat. Oh, you have a written report from me on activities. Unless there's objection, I would like permission to do one report for the month of July and August together, if that's okay. Me, with a clear understanding that if anything important comes up, I will send you an email anyway, as I do, as we go along. Any other, so, no questions? Pat? Counselor comments. Moving on to counselor comments. Oh, before I do that, I do want to mention, I didn't put this in my report, because I didn't do this as a counselor, if you will. But on last week, just this past week, George Ryan joined me in talking to a group of about 16 college professors from all over the world, 14 different countries represented. And I just want to commend Angela Mills and also Sam Giffen for the outstanding PowerPoint that they have, that's an introduction to Amherst Town Government. And we used it that day, and frankly, I've encouraged and hope that we find other venues to use it in, because it's really beautifully done and also very nicely presented. Okay. Okay, all right. Is there anybody that has a question? Jennifer, did you have a question? Yeah.
Yeah, how, can we see that PowerPoint, or is it somewhere on the website?
Yeah, you know, I, I will make the PowerPoint available. In fact, I need to make it available to the people who came. They also wanted a copy of our charter, and we're very interested in that.
I'd like you to serve on the Charter Review Commission.
And they had many questions. The session went for the full two hours. It was very interesting, so, okay. Jennifer, anything else?
No, thank you. I would just love, I'd like to see that.
All right, we're up to counselor comments. Pat DeAngelis.
I would like to let everyone on the council know, and, but especially, I want residents of District Two to know that I've decided not to run again for a council seat. It has been an exciting, taxing, and absolutely wonderful experience, and I will always be grateful for the chance I've had to learn and grow in this community. I encourage people to soul-search and run for council, particularly from District Two.
Thank you, Pat. Bob Hegner.
I have a similar announcement, that I do not intend to run again for the council. I've been only on the council for one term, but I have served on the finance committee for a long time. And it's just getting to a point now where I think it's time for somebody else to step up and, and work for the town. It's been great working with all of you. I still have six months left, so I can, will continue to work as hard as I can for this council, this town, and District Five, but, you know, come November, there'll be an election and I won't be participating. Thank you.
Bob, thank you for that. To both of you for your work. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'm going to make, make a motion to adjourn and seek a second. Okay. Then we begin in this case with Jennifer Taub.
Yes.
Counselor Walker.
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Anna Devlin-Gothier.
Aye.
Lynn Griesmer's an aye. Counselor Hanke.
Aye.
Bob Hegner.
Aye.
Pam Rooney.
Yes.
Counselor Ryan.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
It's unanimous, and we beat our record. It's 8:18. Thank you.